Touch too much.
Too much?
Too much.
It is nine o'clock. Becky, are you ready?
Yeah.
Tammy, are you ready? Very good.
I agree with you. This is funny.
Good morning. It is 9:00 a.m. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Commissioners Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 to order. We reserve the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss agenda items currently before the Board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of parties involved. We will be following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the entrance to this room. We will adjourn at 9:15 as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meetings Act. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. This week was Commissioner Weems' turn, and he is absent today, so I will take prayer this morning, if you will join me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today with gratitude for all the blessings that we get to enjoy living in Lincoln County and in the United States. In our country right now, there are many people suffering from the fires in California, lots of social issues around the country. We ask that you be with them, help them make it through these times of struggle and difficulties. Let us come alongside our fellow man and help him through these times. We pray for them, that they lean on your support to get through these difficult times. We ask that you send your armor of protection to all people who are first responders, law enforcement, those who run towards danger, including our military forces, serving both at home and abroad. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I would also like to take this time to honor the life of a past Lincoln County Commissioner, Don Haas. Don served 16 years on this board, but he also served the community his entire life. So with gratitude for a life well-lived, I offer our condolences to Betty and the family. Don's memorial service is today at 11:00 a.m., so I kept the agenda light because I know several of us here would like to attend his service. And Commissioner Brunson suggested that we offer a moment of silence, so let's do that now. Thank you. We will now move on to the second agenda item. Approval of the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting held on January 13th, 2025.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve those minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 13th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunson.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Item number three. Consider the following claims and treasures receipts.
Make a motion to approve the claims of Fraser receipts as presented.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I will point out that there is a nice amount on the revenue listing for the interest on bank accounts. Roll call, please. Hugley. Brunson.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
We will also review an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the Register of Deeds.
Madam Chair, it would be my motion that we receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the Register of Deeds, in the amount of $22,519.22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Brunson.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
It's going to be Monday all day.
Yes.
And it's Tuesday.
All day.
And fewer and fewer prior claims every year, aren't we?
There was a lot of attorneys on this match.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted by the door. Our first item is approving the minutes of the meeting from January...
13.
13. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of Lincoln County Board of Equalization of our January 13th, 2025 meeting. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Brunson.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. Thank you, Julie. We have motor vehicle tax exemption application as submitted by the county treasurer.
Madam Chair, I have one application for exemption from 457 from the Community Action Partnership of Mid-Nebraska. It's for five vehicles used to, the sole purpose of transportation of clients and staff within Lincoln County. It's recommended for approval by Sherri Newton. It would be my motion that we approve this application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunson.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before the Board of Equalization? With that, we will adjourn at 9:17 as Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Next agenda item is at 9:20.
Pretty tight shit, but...
Yeah, way too dry.
I should have been paying closer attention, huh?
And we needed some snow cover before they got this real cold snap. Yeah, it's not going to do the plans any again.
Joe, after the meeting, if I could get a minute of your time. My daughter has a...
Pretty busy. Actually, I think that...
Oh, I was just talking to you on the way. My daughter has a senior project.
Yeah.
And needs some architectural plans at a high school.
Sure. You mean your diving daughter?
Yes.
When in the state?
Oh goodness, I... It's on the calendar.
On the calendar.
I'm a day-by-day.
I get it.
Right now.
I don't, I don't know anything, so they're making me kind of nervous.
Anything breaks out, I'm closest to the runner, Michael.
It is 9:20. Our agenda item is the annual appointments to the following boards and committees for 2025. Listed on the agenda is the committee assignments for 2024. I did ask at last week's meeting for everyone to take a look at their committees and if they had any requests for additions or deletions or swapping of committees to let me know. I did have several conversations. And so this is the changes that will be made for 2025. Becky, I'll just start at the top with Commissioner Hugley. He will remain on the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Committee, the Region Two Human Services Committee, the ADA Coordinator, the Rules Committee, Law Enforcement Judiciary Committee, Personnel Committee, and we are officially adding an Inland Port Committee. Commissioner Weems will have the West Central Aryan Aging, North Platte Senior Center Advisory Committee, the Drug Task Force, Law Enforcement and Judiciary Committee, Safety Committee, and the West Central Department of Health Board Liaison. Also on that next item, we currently have listed as the Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Committee. Is there any opinion on changing that name officially to the Predator Control Committee?
I think what we had wanted to do, Ken and I had discussed this, we were thinking Pest and Predator Control. Pest and Predator Control Committee would be a fairly appropriate terminology, as Ken and I had discussed.
I, I agree. That would be appropriate and send a message that we don't, it's not just about prairie dogs. It's about any pest that is causing property damage for Lincoln County residents.
Surely, it's not referring that these poor little prairie dogs are pests.
They're worse than that, but...
Prairie rodents are, no, prairie rodents, that's right. Yeah, correct it. 1904, I was listening to that conversation, so, thank you.
We got that all squared away, didn't we, Caitlin?
Yes, great. Thank you.
There was some great history shared before the meeting started about the prairie rodents in Nebraska.
No, I was not alive at that point in time.
Moving on, Commissioner Woller. I will keep the West Central Development, or West Central Nebraska Development District, the Sandhills RC&amp;D, the Lincoln County Roads Committee, the Building and Grounds Committee, Noxious Weed Committee, Planning and Zoning Committee, and I am open to discussion about officially adding a Transportation Committee. I looked back in the minutes. This was discussed last year during a meeting, and we asked for some definition on the RISE grant application. And it was discussed in that meeting that it's different from the Lincoln County Roads Department Committee. So I feel like, rather than it just being an ad hoc committee, transportation is something that's, it's going to be a long conversation for Lincoln County, and I think having a standing committee on our list would be beneficial. So I'm open to conversation about that.
I'm fine with that. I like the idea. Personally, I think I agree with you that transportation's going to be an ongoing thing.
Yes.
I think that anything, you know, all modes of transportation should be considered in that. I mean, we've had issues out of Bailey Yard with that kind of transportation.
Agreed.
I would think that that could probably roll up underneath of that committee. That would be my two cents on it.
I'd agree. Very important.
Four cents.
Very good. We have consensus then. And I will be one of the people this year on the Transportation Committee. I, I feel like it's important enough and a big enough responsibility that two commissioners would be on that committee. So that takes us on to Commissioner Brunson. Chris, I have West Central Nebraska Development District, the County Extension Eggs Society Committee, Lincoln County Planning and Zoning Committee, the Rules Committee, the Inland Port Committee, and the Transportation Committee. and the Transportation Committee. For Commissioner Woodruff, the Visit North Platte Board of Directors, the Mid-Nebraska Community Action Partnership, the Personnel Committee, County Roads Committee, the Lincoln County Pest and Predator Control Committee, and the Building and Grounds Committee.
Sounds great.
Very good. Other appointments. The appointees to receive the drug testing reports would be the chairperson, which is Commissioner Woller and Tyler Volkmer. Fair Housing Representative is Becky Russell. South Central Planning and Exercise Training Region is the Region 51 Emergency Management, Brandon Myers and Joanna Lemoine. Also, ad hoc committees. I'm not even sure if I'm aware of who all is on ad hoc committees and what those committees are. Is that a list that we should also have available to us?
Sure. I, I would think so. And, and you know, ad hoc committees are for a certain purpose. When that purpose is done, they dissolve, so. Yeah, I think that's very appropriate.
Do we have any current active ad hoc committees?
There's the ARPA Committee, which would be Commissioner Hughley and myself.
Commissioner Woodruff, are, are there any ad hoc committees that you serve on?
I can't think of any right now.
The Transportation Committee that we had for the RISE grant, I would think would now roll up underneath of the Permanent Transportation Sitting Committee.
And I should have addressed that, yes. That was my intention, that that would be- you know, that, that, the RISE grant is what kicked all of this off. So, yeah, I think it would be good for it.
That ad hoc was Commissioner Hughley and myself.
Correct.
So, now Commissioner Hughley is off of-
Yes. And Joe and I had conversation about that, so he was aware.
I'm just clarifying for the record.
Yes. Joe, are there any ad hoc committees that you currently serve on?
No, not that I, not that I can think of. You know, the ADA Committee is almost, or could, could be considered an ad hoc committee because when that started, is when we had a large ADA study a number of years ago. And, you know, because I had some experience in that end. I was involved in that study. We got the study. But unless something comes up, that, I think that ought to almost be an ad hoc committee. And I'm not sure it needs to be listed because it's something that I don't- you know, it's like receiving, you know, drug testing and things like that. Although that's ongoing, mine isn't. So I, I would almost think that the ADA Committee should probably come off the permanent committee list. And if there's a need, be an ad hoc committee or something that you would point somebody. That's just my thought. Because it's not really an active committee, so.
That's a good one to ask.
Okay. We will remove the ADA.
We have federal requirements that, for that. And when we had that, we had the federal requirements for that. And I thought it was a contract that we had to do, like training.
That was a 10-year contract.
10-year, okay.
And that contract has expired?
That was the very same one where I found all the pictures of my predecessors holding a tape measure and measuring sinks and slopes on walkways and things like that.
Do we have anything with the RISE grant, that information that I sent you to review?
There is something in there about a self-assessment.
If, if you want to leave that as a standing committee and myself on it, I have no problem. Just whatever works best for the group.
I think there's, there's going to be some stuff that comes down with the RISE grant that needs some attention for ADA compliance. Really, nothing related to the actual transportation planning grant, but just requirements that we have to do a self-assessment as a county, so.
And so would it be appropriate for that to, to stay on?
If it needs to go ad hoc, it could probably go ad hoc. I'm just throwing out that there's going to be stuff coming down the pipeline, so.
I'd say that would be for chair and legal counsel to work out.
Tyler, what's your opinion on the ADA? Should it stay as a standing committee or ad hoc would suffice?
It's one of those things where we need it, we need it. But it's not done anything in the half a decade I've been sitting here. I don't think it's a legal reason we have to have a subcommittee of commissioners for it. If a ADA issue comes up, you could certainly appoint the head of profits Commissioner Hughley's suggesting. Or if it's going to turn on to a thing, you could certainly make a new standing committee.
My question, Commissioner Brunz. If it's ADA related to the grant for transportation, would that be something that the Transportation Committee would address? Or would that be a different county member?
Well, it's going to be specific ADA requirements that need to be reviewed. So, from my perspective, I think that we need to have something dedicated with that knowledge. I have enough knowledge on ADA to be dangerous. I'm not the expert like Commissioner Hughley is, so.
With that said, I think I'll suggest that we leave it as a standing committee and leave Commissioner Hughley on there.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Perfect. Last summer, I was asked to submit a fiscal note during the legislative session for the veteran bill that I was working on with the veteran service officers. And I think one thing kind of led to another. And the fiscal office had sent Becky, I don't know, 10, 13 requests for fiscal notes to be submitted. Just the, the short involvement I had with the legislative process. We have new people in the fiscal office. The, the fiscal conversation of all of these bills plays a big deciding factor in whether they get passed or not. Because, you know, budget and cost is always one of the top concerns. So, I, I think having a fiscal note ad hoc committee and maybe depending on the requests that we get and the, and the bills that the county is supporting, that should be appointed at that time when we decide what we're going to support. So, that, that can be an ad hoc committee that changes with each legislative session.
I would almost, Madam Chair, if you don't indulge me, recommend making a legislative committee a standing committee. Just having a couple of representatives keep tabs on legislate- legislation that's going to affect the county government here in Lincoln County.
And then that committee could also do the fiscal notes? I like that. So, Commissioner Hughley, Commissioner Brunz suggested that rather than have a fiscal note ad hoc, that we make a legislative committee a standing committee.
Good, good recommendation.
I agree. With that said, Commissioner Brunz, are you volunteering to be the legislative committee?
I volunteer to nominate him.
Okay, very good. I would just like to point out that-
Only if you're on it with me.
That's what it, go ahead.
That's going to be a two-person job.
Okay. I just had a talk with myself over the weekend about boundaries and knowing when my plate was full. But considering that I will be doing a lot down in the legislature with Nacoa, it would probably be a reasonable-
Extension.
Extension of that, yes. So, I will accept your challenge. Unless we have other commissioners that are more passionate about it.
I think we're set.
That was a hard no.
That came awful easy. Okay. Becky, do you have any questions or you have all that?
Yeah, I just want your sheet sheet when you're done.
Oh, boy. My, my shorthand leaves a lot to be desired, but I will share it with you.
If someone has two, two numbers on it, no, someone might only have one, so, yeah.
Okay, very good. Let me make this a little more understandable.
Let's take off the committee that no longer meets economic tenancy.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I had a line drawn through it, but I did not address that. So, thank you for pointing that out.
It's been defunct for a few years, so.
One other thing I would like to have a conversation about is our Mugs in the Morning radio spot. I would like to propose that whoever leads prayer for the commissioners that Monday is responsible for the Mugs in the Morning radio spot on Tuesday. I think it's good to have a variety of us talking and reviewing the agenda items that we have talked about in our Monday meeting. And if Tuesday morning doesn't work out for you, then you can find somebody to, to take your spot. That's not really something that we have on a committee assignment. It's just a conversation between us here. I do really like the Mugs in the Morning. I think it helps us keep the community informed on the different projects that we are working on. I also like the tradition that Commissioner Hughley started last year by inviting somebody to go with you on occasion. So, a department head, another elected official, an employee from the county that, that we've been working on projects with. So, if anybody has any input there, let's talk about that now.
You know, I think also along those lines that there's a special project that the commissioners are working on or, you know, we have something special that we need to get the word out. Might be a good time to either have them do it or be the guest with whomever is doing it, so we can- No, I think that's going to vary probably with each one of us. You know, that maybe, may go to the thing about the political thing with proposed legislation or whatever. I can think of a number of things that might be appropriate at that time.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Good, good idea.
Okay, very good. With that said, I'm out of town tomorrow. So, Commissioner Woodruff already stepped up and said that he will take our radio spot tomorrow morning, so.
And while we're talking about that, I'm not very good at prayer. I was wondering if I could be excused from my list on the prayer times.
That's a hard no for me. That was easy.
I'd answer that. I guess I'll be doing mugs once every five weeks then. Thank you.
But if, but if you are busy and you don't want to do mugs, I would gladly step up and fill your spot for you.
I would, I would too. And I obviously was trying to be facetious about prayer.
Okay, so, committee assignments. Are there any other suggestions or conversations that you would like to have on that topic? All right, we will move on to our 9:30 item. Discuss and consider setting annual salaries for the following department heads for 2025. We have our Highway Superintendent, our Noxious Weed Superintendent, Region 51 Emergency Management Director, and Veteran Service Officer. I'm going to turn this over to our Personnel Committee, who met with each other and with those employees this week. And so, gentlemen, it is over to you.
I'll start out. Chris and I met with the individuals. Good meetings. Pleased with the dialogue that we had, and it really was that. I appreciate Jason Schultz being put on short notice with me to come up with a list of his goals and things he'd like to see accomplished over the next few years. He did a great job. I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Brunz, he can speak for himself. But I, I think that we have excellent people in those positions. And I can't say enough good things about them. I think that we are in agreement with what our recommendations would be salary-wise. And I'll let Commissioner Brunz talk a little bit about his thoughts.
You know, I echo Commissioner Hughley's thoughts on the talent that we have filling those roles that we've appointed. We put a lot of faith, trust, and confidence in all four of them and can't speak highly enough about the work that they do on behalf of us and for all the residents in Lincoln County. That said, we are also facing a pretty tight budget year. We always are. We explained that with the individuals. And it would be, Joe, if I may, the committee's recommendation that all of these individuals receive the cost of living adjustment to their salary with-
2.5.
What's that?
2.5 cost.
Yeah, 2.5 percent cost of living. With an additional amount for one of the individuals after we did some, some study. Our Noxious Weed Superintendent covers a huge area here in Lincoln County. In our study of our array, we identified that they are slight- not slightly, they're below where we want them to be as far as remaining competitive. So, it would be the committee's recommendation that we bump that salary $3,000.
On top of the 2.5?
On top of the 2.5. Is that-
Would you say two or three? What did you say? That's fine.
Very good. I think I shared last week when we were having this conversation that I felt like, beyond the Personnel Committee, that the commissioners that serve on the different committees would have input and opinion. And so, you guys know that I'm not bashful about sharing my two cents either. So, I did have good conversation about it. And I absolutely support that recommendation.
Providing that bump in, in the Noxious Weed Superintendent, that brings all of our appointed official, our appointed department heads, rather, right where we want them to be as far as being competitive within the array, so.
Very nice. I think that's very important for retaining our talent and recruiting new talent. Commissioner Woodruff?
I would suggest that 2.5 is not enough. I will not support anything less than 3%. Is there a reason, Julie? Or just, just lucky officials got a 3%. We didn't get it at the same time. It's not annual. It was a, back in the beginning of our thing, we set that at the beginning of the term, I think.
Yes, the, the elected official study was done just as our new terms were starting. So, that's three years old, I believe, is when that was set.
That was like 9%, if we recall. That's when we made that recommendation.
Spread, spread over the four-year term, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, in my research, I did pull the budget message off of our website. And for all county, all county employees, we set the 2.5 in September. Is that correct, Becky?
What was the cost of living last year?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
About 6.7.
Yeah, it was.
Somewhere around that.
Work was even higher than that, if I remember correctly.
And the elected officials did not get that?
We got three across the board.
Because that was decided, yeah, during the, the survey and array, yeah. So. Is there any other conversation? Do we need a motion?
It's a discuss and consider.
Okay.
Madam Chair, based on the committee's recommendation, it would be my motion that we set annual salaries- it would be my motion that we set annual salaries for the following department heads. The highway superintendent receiving a two point five cost of living adjustment increase. The noxious weed superintendent receiving a two point five percent cost of living adjustment increase, as well as a $3,000 merit pay increase. The Region 51 Emergency Management Director receiving an additional two point five percent cost of living adjustment increase. And the veteran service officer receiving an additional two point five percent cost of living adjustment increase.
I'll send the motion. Go ahead, please.
My input, effective date, because I believe payroll was last week. Is that correct?
Don't believe we can do things retroactively, so it would be my...
All of these departments will all have to change payroll in seven minutes.
Yeah, it needs to be effective.
Today?
It needs to be effective today.
Yeah.
Well, it needs to be on the 16th, if you want to start with payroll.
Would be my motion to make it effective immediately.
Okay. Does it, can we make it effective the 16th?
Well, I mean, this is where we kind of got off, because the payroll period's going to be from 12/16 to 1/15.
Right, so we'll have to do a proration.
So, their salary will be correct for this January pay period.
All eyes are on you, legal counsel.
If all of them comes, that's work they've already done.
Exactly.
And that's where we start to run into the constitutional issue of a constitutional perpetuity, because now you're paying them more money than they, for work they've already done, than what they already agreed to do it for.
Which I know is going to be additional accounting and a pain in the rear end for...
Well, I mean, it's not. I mean, they'll have, yeah, we'll have to change payroll.
Okay.
So...
All right, so effective today.
Effective today.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
We want to make this effective 1/16.
You said today.
That is, is going to screw everything up, Tyler.
We can't, we, yeah, the conversation was Tyler said we can't do it retroactively.
Okay, so we're going to have to have two, your heads are going to have to split your payroll. We're going to have to have two different salary amount or two different amounts.
Yeah, which is why I said...
They're going to have to do it pro, I mean, we're going to have to do it, yeah.
Right, but that'd just be for the four people we're talking about, okay?
Yes, just the four people.
They understand that. Then we'll have to have a payroll change notices, two for daughter, and a retirement to track.
It'll be, it'll be additional accounting and paperwork.
Effective today, okay. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
For constitutional purposes.
Becky, I put those payroll change notices there. Did you see them?
No, I didn't.
They were on here.
I have them right here.
Oh, you've got them, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody understands, it's fine.
Fill these out after the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Becky, I'll get with you after the meeting. We'll get those filled out. Roll call, please.
Brunson?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
No.
Uller?
Aye.
I understand your, your point. If I'm getting a three percent, they get a three percent.
Our next agenda item is the quarterly report by the Region 51 Emergency Management Director. Good morning, Brandon.
Hello, I'm Chief Chee here.
If you'd like to sign in and announce yourself?
Brandon Myers, Director of Region 51 Emergency Management.
Brandon, I'm going to start by saying thank you. I believe Commissioner Hughley requested a printed-out list of all of the acronyms.
That's a majority of the acronyms. Maybe, oh, maybe 50%.
I think, I think you have beat the army, maybe, on acronyms. I'm not sure about that, but...
Hopefully, that'll make it a little easier for you guys.
It will, for me, for sure.
Um, let's see. The 2024 EMPG grant, second quarter submission, has been submitted to NEMA for $12,954.60. We will be sending $2,130.70 to Dundee County, $1,607.40 to Hitchcock County on receipt of these funds. We submitted 11 2022 HMGG HSHP grant reimbursements totaling $39,746.38. 17 2023 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements for $46,124.77. Five 2024 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling $29,659.95 this quarter. We sent quarterly invoices to Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for their quarterly approved budget for each county. This will be $9,831.13 from Dundee County and $8,374.88 from Hitchcock County. Dundee, Hitchcock, and Lincoln County Hazard Mitigation Plans are up to date. We are within the brick application process for Dundee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I represent Lincoln County for the Wells Canyon CWPP and Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for the Southwest CWPP. Both of those plans are up to date. NEMA has decided to quit funding the bold planning, which is where our LEOPS were online. We've downloaded all of our LEOPS, which we still continuously make adjustments on our contacts. The new Hazmet Plan Section for Lincoln County LEOP has been completed by the Lincoln County LEPC is current. Quarterly report to NEMA has been completed and submitted. I attended the Community Engagement Panel Planning Meeting. Brandon, or myself and Joanna, attended the MPPD CNPPID Emergency Action Plan Review and Training. Kyle participated in a tour of the Coogler Company fertilizer manufacturing plant in Culberson. Joanna attended three Lincoln County CERT team meetings and one Nebraska Citizen Core Council meeting. Joanna, Pam, and Kyle attended the NPA Pipeline Training Tabletop. I attended the IPPW Workshop in Lincoln. Joanna attended the National Weather Service Lebird Field FAD Tabletop. Myself and Pam attended the IAM Conference and the NACO Conference. Pam attended stroke training at Dundee County Hospitals. I taught CPR to the Police Department. Pam taught CPR BLS to Dundee County Hospital staff, Dundee County Stratton High School staff, teachers and coaches, and Dundee County Sheriff's Office and dispatchers. Myself and Joanna participated in County Government Day. I conducted a winter weather interview with KNOPE and participated in Veterans Day and Christmas Day parades. Kyle assisted in Culberson Volunteer Fire Department with Culberson Cemetery Flag Display. Staff also monitored weather daily. There were several minor fires and a few minor winter weather events this quarter. I attended a snow removal prep meeting. Pam monitored for freezing fog, road conditions during one winter event. Kyle assisted with a public boil water notification for the Village of Culberson due to E. coli contamination. DR-4808 for severe weather in May and June. Damage inventories have been completed for the north, for, uh, in North Flat, Dundee and Hitchcock Counties. Recovery scoping meetings were completed for Dundee and Hitchcock Counties. The exploratory call for North Flat is coming up, and we're in the process of gathering and researching information needed for these disasters, which include GPS coordinates and street addresses. DR-4822 for severe weather in June, July. Advocate briefing was conducted. Our office is available to the North Flat Opportunity Center and Lebird Field Airport for assistance as needed while they fill out their paperwork. Kyle attended three Culberson EMS meetings, trainings, three Culberson fire meetings, assisted with the Culberson Rescue Volunteer Fire Department Spiedy Feed fundraiser, and attended the Trenton Volunteer Fire Department Pancake Feed. Pam and Kyle also assisted with numerous EMS calls. The meetings we went to this quarter, we attended one South Central Pet Region, one Lincoln County LEPC, two Southwest Pet Region, two Southwest LEPC, one County Government Day, one Nebraska IMT3 FSC, one Baxter Plant Shutdown, one meeting with Mike Jacobson, one NACO Legislative Meeting, two NAM Board, two, uh, one sub-meeting, two NPHCSC meetings, one West Central Nebraska Tim Meeting, one West Central Nebraska Tim Self-Assessment, one NAM New EM Committee Meeting, one NAM Conference Committee, two newcomer meetings, one HMPG Policy Procedures, one South Central Pet Region Label Printers Asset Management Tool Meeting, one QR Code Meeting, one South Central Pets Cyber Security Grant Procedure with Sean Pitchard, one elected department head meeting, one EM Director and CRG intro, one new dispatcher's EM discussion with myself and Joanna, one Dundee County Hospital Trauma, one Frenchman Mutual Aid Association, two Lincoln County Commissioners, one Dundee, one Dundee County Commissioners, one Hitchcock County Commissioner meetings. Upcoming events, continue to monitor our winter weather. Psychological first aid training and Train the Trainer class for our CERT team, spring storm spotter classes, NAM Conference, CERT trainings, and of course, our outreach, our planning and setting up exercises, and continuing hard-on training.
That is a lot that you had on your plate last quarter.
That's a Tuesday.
Can you explain the psychological first aid training? I think that's the first time that that's gotten my attention. Is that something new?
No, it's been around for a long time. It's, a lot of first responders will get it. A lot of responding agencies, so Red Cross, Salvation Army. We've done it before for our CERT. This is the first time we've kind of done a Train the Trainer so that we can get people trained up to go out and teach more of these.
I think that's a wonderful...
So, it's, it's a valuable, valuable tool, tool form. And it helps them recognize, especially during disasters, what kind of psychological events people may be going through.
Brandon, when we, on the first page, the bold planning, was that something that was funded before?
It was funded by NEMA, by the state.
And so, tell me exactly how that fit into the LEOPS. Was that just a matter of, would just explain?
It's where we, we had to, as emergency managers across the state, go in and rebuild our LEOPS in a digital format
Right.
in the cloud. And that's where we could allow people to have access to it. Made it a little easier in some aspects for us to do our updates, so everybody had an updated version.
But I get that, so, but is, is their thinking, now that it's already done, you can merely maintain that? Is that what their thinking?
We could, yeah. But now, the state no longer is supporting that. They're not paying for it. And we have not been told what they're going to next.
But, but my point is this, whether, whether they pay for it, anything else, we did take the time to get that thing, did we?
Yes.
Okay, so for God's sakes, let's not let it get stale.
No, it's, even, even our hardbound books, we, we did the, the yearly updates on village boards, commissioner boards,
Right.
and sent those updates out, but we still have the electronic copy in our computers, so...
So important. We don't know what's going to happen down the road, but we know that that's going to be an invaluable tool that we have. Like, I just, please, I'm asking, keep it current.
Oh, yes.
And that way, you know, I'm a printed guy. I'm not a digital guy. But that way, if somebody, if you do have to print out a new LEOP, you've got it right there.
Yeah.
End of my sermon.
Brandon, I want to share with you that I had a former customer in southwest part of the state, not Lincoln County, share a story with me that they took a CPR class that you instructed and recently had to use that knowledge on a family member, and it worked. So, they just asked that I pass that along, so, great job in helping people help ourselves.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for Brandon?
Just a testament to the remarks that we made earlier. Really appreciate the work that you and your team do for Lincoln County.
Absolutely.
Can't say that enough?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And good work keeping the snow blizzards away.
Yeah, I'd like...
So far.
So far.
I'd like to put in a...
Could use a little bit of snow.
Lower, lower temperature is my request. I'm okay with the snow. So, as long as we're putting in requests, that's fine. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
We are now to, Tyler, do we have a need for a closed session?
Sure do.
Oh, boy.
We're going to one of the places where you can talk about purchase of real estate.
May I get a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session at 10:01 a.m. with the board and legal counsel present.
Second motion, with purpose stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Brunson?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye. We will now go into closed session for the purpose of discussion of a real estate purchase.